Trustee, we're reconvening our open session and ask trustee Inman to report out actions taken in closed session.
Thank you. On a six to zero vote with trustee Jay absent regarding claim number 641734, the Governing Board in closed session voted to issue a notice of rejection of demand letter pursuant to Government Section Code 913. The Governing Board further authorizes the Vice Chancellor of Business Services or her designee to issue any appropriate notices.
Thank you for that.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, there's three.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had to turn the page. Okay. On a seven to zero vote, the Board took action in closed session at its meeting on January 22nd, 2024, not to renew the employment of a probationary faculty member. The administrative remedies of the faculty member have subsequently been exhausted. One more. On a six to zero vote with trustee Jay absent, the Board took action in closed session to accept the resignation of an academic administrator in consideration of the sum of $35,000. The Board approved the agreement and general release as executed by the academic administrator and district and has authorized the chancellor or designee to take all steps necessary to effect the decision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that, trustee Inman. Now we'll have our invocation led by trustee Dak, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee In. You are able to stand, please do so.
I will keep this brief. I do know that classes started this last week, so we have a lot of new faces on campus. I see a couple of new faces in the front row here with the changing over of the academic year. So I just want to wish all faculty, staff, administrators, a strong start to the year and looking forward to a great '24, '25 school year at Saddleback and IVC. And I'm going to pass it over to trustee Inman.
Thank you. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was interesting. I couldn't hear you guys. All right.
We could down.
We're on to 3.5, recognition of IVC's honors program, and I'm going to ask trustee Rydel to lead this.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I am so proud to do this, and we will ask those involved to come up soon, but I want to read this to you. It has to do with our honors program at IVC. "The Board of Trustees certification of the achievement. Whereas SOCCD Board of Trustees has profoundly impressed, is impressed with the accomplishments of the Irvine Valley College 2023-24 Honors Program, which has doubled in size in the last four years to 960 members. And whereas the IVC Honors Program offers 55 approved honors courses, all providing reduced class sizes and a range of enrichments for students, and therefore, the Board of Trustees awards a certificate of achievement in honor of the outstanding accomplishments achieved by Irvine Valley College." Now, for those who are involved, we have, I don't, Julianne, you want to?
Yeah, I think we're going to go ahead and turn it over to President Hernandez to introduce the item.
Thank you, Chancellor Barnes, and I appreciate trustee Rydel providing that context. Our program was started in 2003 and in a very short number of years has increased, as you indicated, to a very large number of honor students. We believe it is possibly the largest honors program within Orange County community colleges. And before I introduce our honors program faculty coordinator, I did want to say that one unique aspect of the IVC honors program is that every student is supported through faculty-mentored undergraduate research. And this past year alone, the number of students, we had over 215 students representing over 141 projects that presented at six different research conferences, both regional and state. And it is so impressive, the times I have attended some of these, to see our, the sheer number, the critical mass of honor students represented at those conferences, but more importantly, to sit and listen and hear their research as well as their poster sessions is truly an incredible opportunity for an undergraduate student to get that type of exposure. So with that in mind, I want to introduce Professor Emily Liu, who has just provided incredible leadership these past few years. She is all in with honors, and it shows in the quality of the program, the quality experience our students receive. And Professor Liu, I'd like to welcome you to the podium.
She won the Teacher of the Year. Thank you. Thank you so much to the SOCCCD District, the Board of Trustees, President Hernandez, Chancellor Barnes. Thank you all so much for this recognition of the honors program. It truly is a labor of love of honors faculty, our Vice President of Instruction, Rick Miranda, our Dean, Brooke Bowie, our Administrative Assistant, Chuck Haymoravian, and our wonderful students that we have here. Aturv Athri is a second-year computer science major and is integral in providing support to all IVC students who have an interest in doing undergraduate research. We also have here Alicia Wells, who is an honors program graduate from 2019, and she graduated in 2019, was an honors program member, was involved in Psi Beta, achieved multiple associate's degrees, graduating summa cum laude. She transferred to UC Irvine. She is now in her third year at the UC Irvine School of Medicine, where she's part of the Health Education to Advance Leaders in Integrative Medicine effort, the Medical Student Research Program, and has started up a program called CC to MDDO, which is a seminar series that aims to demystify the pre-med pathway from community college to medical school. And so Alicia, if it's okay, I'm just going to give my platform to Alicia to say a little bit about what IVC honors has done for her and her educational journey.
Thank you, Professor Liu, for that really wonderful introduction. So as she already stated, my name's Alicia Wells. I am an alumni from the 2019 class for the honors program. I'm a current third-year medical student at UC Irvine, and I'm applying into neurosurgery. And so all these things would not be possible without the honors program, and I can undoubtedly say that. When I first started my career at Irvine Valley College, fresh out of high school, it was definitely scary, coming from a background where most of my family didn't go into higher education. My mom had no education, and no women in my family had a single educational degree, even associates. And so during my first year of college at IVC, I was looking for programs that I could get involved in, and the IVC honors program stood out to me. And so it actually wasn't until really the beginning of my second year that I applied and I got involved. And that's sort of, you know, what I can attribute a lot of the trajectory of my career towards. I found wonderful mentors, some of them being Louis Long. He was my writing 2H professor, and he was wonderful in that he gave us all the opportunity to do really involved research. My research was on two breast cancer genes and sort of the relation to the development of breast cancer and the development of ovarian cancer. And it ended up being this 70-page manuscript, which no one would have expected, including Dr. Long. And we had to pare it down to 40 pages, so that was kind of humbling, and ended up presenting this. I think that research got presented at four or five different conferences: Stanford, UCLA, UCI, IVC Saddleback. And then over the course of, I think, the next year, I also presented four or five posters as well at similar conferences. And that really kickstarted my research and sort of my interest as well in medicine and neuroscience. Through my involvement at Psi Beta as well, under the direction of Michael Cassens, who was a psychology honors professor, he's been, he was incredibly wonderful at mentoring students, including myself and many of my other friends. And, you know, to this day, I'm heavily involved in research, always writing papers, always writing manuscripts. And, you know, even my medical school colleagues are like, how do you, how do you pump it out so fast? I'm like, ah, you know, it's just community college, trained me well. Yeah. So, and including sort of presentations, some of my medical school colleagues never presented once, you know, even entering now in our third year. And I'm like, ah, you know, I had 12 before even transferring. And so, you know, it's a fantastic, you know, program that gave me so many opportunities even now. And outside of academics, I met one of my best friends at the honors program, and she married another honors program member, and I was her bridesmaid. Yeah, and I met my partner here at Saddleback of five years. And so IVC is really near and dear to my heart and has provided pretty much, I think, I say one of the sentinel sort of key components of my life was coming here, going to the honors program, and I think it's really led me on the path I've been on. So thank you to IVC honors program and for having me here, and then for Professor Liu to continuing to, you know, support sort of our endeavors of getting community college students interested in medicine and getting them on the right track to go to, you know, a DO or a MD program or, you know, wherever that may take them. So thank you for having me.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so we do have a certificate. Do you want to, maybe we could, do you want to come on up here and we'll take a photo with, and also with our honor students?
Well, that was wonderful. And I didn't know I was in the photo until halfway through. All right. That's, that was great. I think we have multiple public comments, requests for public comment, and I'm going to turn it over to trustee Rydel. I think that's a little bit easier to manage in person.
Okay, everyone, I have 12 requests here, and to make it go fast, I'd like five of you to come at a time who wanted to speak, and then we'll just, I don't have to call, you have to walk. So let's make it faster because we want to get out on time, and I want to hear what you have to say. So with five of you, I'm not going to call names, with the five people, who wants to go first, just come up here. Five of you standing against the wall, and then we'll listen to you.
I'm Susan Akavon. I'm an ESL professor at Irvine Valley College. I'd first like to thank all of the negotiators for all of the hard work you've put in and the progress that we've made so far. As a writer, I wait for the words to settle in, to know when they match the message that I'm trying to give, and that never really happened for the thoughts that I want to share tonight. But I do want to take this opportunity to speak. I value my colleagues for sharing the very specific economic data and the personally impactful stories of the enormous life-changing effects the contract has on them, has on all of us. Here we are, two months past the contract date. Looking at the 2% parity offer, for example, for adjunct, it struck me that at that rate, decades will pass and countless part-time faculty will retire, never having been paid what they justly deserve for the exact same teaching as full-time faculty. And I cannot stomach that injustice. We know that we must also continue to attract and retain high-quality full-time faculty by being absolutely realistic about what it means to live and work in Orange County. The vision that I encourage us all to see is that we are all a team, and on top of that, we are community college educators. That says a lot about who we all are. Let's live up to that responsibility that we accepted when we joined this team. Let's invest in our students by truly valuing the faculty who guide them in their intellectual and personal growth every single day and forward in their lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hello. My name is Jessica Budica. I'm a full-time faculty member here at Saddleback College. I teach English composition. I want to thank the Board for hearing us today about these things that have real-world implications on our lives and our work. I've been, you know, there's a lot of talk about contracts, and I've been thinking about, like, what does a contract mean to me, right? And it's, it's an agreement and expectations between people. So it's the agreement and expectations between us and the district and the Board and our students. And so I wanted to talk about maybe what people think the contract is versus what actually happens in the classroom. So I teach four composition classes. There's 25 to 28 students in those classes. Well, my classes have a 25-student cap. Notice I'm already working above what is expected of me and above my contract, because that's the agreement I'm making to my students, and I'm going to do whatever I can to help them. And sometimes they have last-minute scheduling conflicts. They had to drop an in-person class, so they've got to pick up an online class, but all the online classes are full. They can only take a class at this time because they have kids or whatever else. So I take them into my class above what is expected of me in my contract. So I teach four composition, all right, teach four composition classes. There's numerous papers in those, in those classes. They take tons of feedback. And then on top of it, there's scaffolding assignments, and those scaffolding assignments, those all need ample feedback, because those assignments help my students write those papers on a grander, bigger scale, right? And this is no different than faculty in many other departments. This isn't exclusive to English. So if I were to clock that out as fast as I possibly could, and when I told this number to my colleagues, they kind of laughed because it was like, no way you could do it that fast. 12 minutes, if I did 12 minutes every single paper, that still puts me at a 20-hour work week. So again, I'm working above my contract. I'm working above what is expected. Yet, the current expectation of the pay increase is, covers less than one half of a month of childcare for my two kids, and they go to public school. It's less than one year's worth of milk, eggs, and bread. So pay me in my value and not altruism, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hello. My name is Pete Moran. I'm a full-time faculty at Saddleback College. I'm reading comments from Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo, who is not able to be here this evening. So Carmen Mara says, "Good evening, Chancellor, Board members, colleagues, and members of our community. I am Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo, full-time professor in the international languages, among four more full-time faculty in our departments. We teach 11 languages in the international languages department, and only three of those are taught by our full-time professors. All of the others are taught by part-time faculty. The contribution of these part-time instructors to the students is amazing. These instructors have exceptional skills and commitment to the department and to their students." So one more time, I would like to ask each one of you to support the 24 part-time instructors in the international languages, as well as all of the part-time instructors across the college, in both colleges. They do the same job teaching as full-time instructors, but receive only partial pay. They are invaluable to our students and to the academic community at large. They are exceptional members of our department, dedicating their lives to the success of their students with their innovative teaching methods, whether that's in-person or online. These part-time instructors have gone above and beyond to give students guidance and support in their academic success. Thank you."
Thank you, Pete.
Good evening, everyone. I am April Cabbage. I'm a full-time sociology professor in Gender and Sexuality Studies. I just want to start off by saying I am privileged to be a professor here at Saddleback College. I started a community college, Orange Coast College, got my PhD, and wanted to come back and give the best education to our students because they deserve that. I make sure every single student knows that they are valued, not here at just Saddleback, but in my classroom as well. Very much like you heard from Professor Budica, I too take on all those students who are still clambering, week two, to get into my class because of their schedule changes. I overload my classes, sometimes 10, 15 students more. I don't ask for that overload pay. I do it because it's my job. I do it because it's my commitment. I do it because I love my students. The thing is, is I sometimes don't feel as valued, unfortunately, when these contract negotiations come around. I do countless hours on committee work and professional development that's well above and beyond my contract. I see my colleagues do the same thing, day in and day out, staff members, faculty, the people on the campus that we meet every single day, that are friends and colleagues, that help this place run. I do honors. I'm honors professor. I'm on the honors committee. I'm on the lavender celebration committee. I do the Women's History Month events, One Book One College, Blue Mentorship, speaking to the community, all this stuff that's unpaid. I'm not asking for every single thing to be compensated. I'm just asking to be compensated fairly, along with my colleagues. We are the lowest-paid community college in this county, and yet we live in one of the highest districts possible to live in. How are we going to keep attracting faculty who are bringing the best and the brightest education, the best and the brightest in terms of the teaching, here to Saddleback, to IVC, to our district? We have to do better. We can do better. There's money in our budget to do better with tax-paying dollars. That is a $111 million surplus that is from the tax-paying funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm Jacqueline Zimbalist. I brought some colleagues with me who are going to show you the stats I'm going to read off to you. So I'm a Senior Administrative Assistant at Saddleback College, and I'm talking about the contracts, obviously. And I want to thank you, Board of Trustees, for your time and for listening to me. So for Orange County, very low income is currently $50,250, which equates to $4,187.50 per month. Low income is $80,400. That comes from the California Department of Housing and Community Development as of last year. The number of CSEA classifications that are at below very low to low income at the entry salary for SOCCD is ranged, below very low to very low income is ranges 109 to 114. That's six classification ranges. Below low income to low income is ranges 115 to 133. That's 19 classification ranges. 490 of the 591 employees that are currently in the CSEA bargaining unit are currently paid ranges 109 through 133. That means your executive assistants. 83% of current SOCCD/CSA employees fall under that 490 employee number. And 170 out of 221 job classifications start below the median income for Orange County. That's almost 77% of the total 221 job classifications. So please, please keep those numbers in mind for our contract negotiations, because we are struggling to pay the bills. We're struggling to pay the rent. We've got Child Development Center employees who cannot afford to live close to this area, who have to travel two to four hours to get to work. So that's all I want to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
Hello. My name is Violetta, and I work at Saddleback College as a financial aid specialist. I want to thank you for the time to listen, for taking the time to listen to us this evening. I am here to echo what some of my coworkers have shared regarding our struggles with the 410 schedule and our compensation in general. I recently became a mother to a little baby boy. When my maternity leave ended, I had to find daycare for him while I'm at work. Unfortunately, most daycares these days consider a full day of daycare from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. In this case, I have to pay extra fees for an early drop-off and an extra fee on top of that for a late pickup to accommodate my regular work schedule. As I'm sure you know, due to inflation, his, my son's already expensive daycare becomes even more expensive with all these added fees. During the 410 schedule, my schedule becomes even harder to manage as I have to use my hard-earned vacation time in order to be able to drop off and pick up my son. When I first started here as a project specialist seven years ago, I was commuting every day from West Covina. And for those who don't know, that's about two hours each way with traffic. But I knew even then, when I just started, that Saddleback was a special place, and the work that I was doing as a classified professional in financial aid was meaningful to our students. I have since joined our community and can now proudly say that I'm a part of our service area. I'm very passionate about the work that I do to make college more financially accessible for our students. I hope that you consider what my coworkers are going through to continue doing the best that we can at our everyday job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Tim Swiss. I'm the lighting designer for the AMP division. I see a lot of you at commencement time. I'm usually pointing and telling you which way to go. I'm here, you are going to hear a lot about the financials tonight. I'm going to jump on top of the 410 issue as well. As you know, I could go on with statistics and research, but 410s have a negative impact on health, finances, safety, and family stability. So, and a significant proportion of our staff is not a fan of these. In fact, when we did a survey, most of us wanted this at the top or second to top as far as issues to work out within the contract. Most of us have, most of us are full-time employees. We have childcare issues, and we have to keep a roof over our heads in the summertime. Like you heard, we have to use our vacation time. I have the benefit of having worked here a long time, so I have a lot of vacation time. However, and it adds up to about two weeks, if not more, of vacation time to leave prior to the 10 hours to ensure that my child is picked up. My wife, in the summers, actually works with at-risk youth and incarcerated children in the, in the system, and she works very late. So I'm the primary parent during the summer, and so I have to take our vacation time to make sure that my child is taken care of. So I can also say that summers are the most productive time for the staff here in that with the lesser amount of students, it gives us a lot of time to maintain and bring the school back up to a high standard that we, we pride ourselves on. So I would much rather take that vacation time after the summer, sometime in the fall, to go on a vacation with my family, but it's just simply used to maintain stability. So I think that is the same situation for a lot of our staff members here as well. And I think having an option or a negotiation as far as how those work versus a mandatory situation would be ideal for, for the staff and those who are working under that schedule. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Hi. My name is Giselle Leftwich, and I've worked for the district for over 40 years. I'm currently the Senior Administrative Assistant in the School of AMP. I'm here tonight to ask the Board to support the classified employees' request for parity in regards to the retirement age and supplemental benefits after age 65. First, classified employees are only eligible for benefits at age 60 with 10 years of service, but these benefits end at age 65. Consequently, many classified employees continue to work well into their 60s, 70s, and even 80s solely for the benefits. Administrators, managers, full-time faculty, and the police receive supplemental benefits for life, so why don't we? If the goal of DEI, diversity, equity, inclusion, is to seek fair treatment of all parties, why are classified employees, who often feel like second-class citizens, treated differently? Why do we have to wait until we're 60 years old to retire while other groups can retire at 50 and 55? Why do they get benefits for life while we only get them for five years? Surely, one of the hardest-working groups on campus shouldn't have to work until they die on the job in order to have decent benefits, especially those of us who have dedicated our lives to the district for 20, 30, and 40 years. This disparity, along with the latest salary increase office, has resulted in the lowest morale I have experienced since I began working at Saddleback College North in 1981. I researched how much the district would save if they simply granted the long-term employees with longevity supplemental benefits for life. I found 35 salaried employees, and they're all on step eight. If all of these employees retired, the district would save $1.865 million per year, and that's step eight with longevity minus step one. Some of them said they'd leave tomorrow, and the majority would leave within six months to a year. I don't know how much supplemental benefits cost the district, but my guess it's far less than the amount the district would save. Plus, the group of potential retirees without longevity is even larger than the group with it, so the savings would be even greater. Thank you for listening to our plea.
Thank you, Giselle.
Hi. I'm Linda Hall, and I'm with, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say here. Just, I'm Linda Hall. I'm a senior admin with Saddleback College. Okay, I got that part. I've been here for a very, very long time, and I love what I do. That's, I mean, the students-
I found 35 salaried employees, and they're all on step eight. If all of these employees retired, the district would save $1.865 million per year, and that's step eight with longevity minus step one. Some of them said they'd leave tomorrow, and the majority would leave within six months to a year. I don't know how much supplemental benefits cost the district, but my guess it's far less than the amount the district would save. Plus, the group of potential retirees without longevity is even larger than the group with it, so the savings would be even greater. Thank you for listening to our plea.
Thank you, Giselle.
Hi. I'm Linda Hall, and I'm with, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say here. Just, I'm Linda Hall. I'm a senior admin with Saddleback College. Okay, I got that part. I've been here for a very, very long time, and I love what I do. That's, I mean, the students keep me coming back every year. I love what I do. On that note, I have two areas of concern. Now, mind you, this is the first time I've been here in 22 years, so sorry if I get it wrong. Two areas of concern. The first thing is the 4-10 schedule. Now, you've already heard several people say the same thing I'm going to say, but I just cannot impress upon you enough. The 4-10 schedule is very hard to work. When you're working at a desk for 10 hours a day, it's very hard. The 4-10 schedule puts a cost factor for classified to be able to work for you. Instead of coming to work to earn money, we're coming to work having to spend money to be here. And I just, that to me is crazy. When we're having to be here past childcare hours, when the childcare facilities are open, we have to pay the extra. That's money out of our pocket. When we are having to go to physical therapy because we can't sit in chairs for 10 hours, that's money out of our pocket, okay? When we are having to then use our vacation time to balance not having to quite be here for so long. So our four-week vacation, or for some of you that haven't been here for quite so long, two weeks, it shortens, you know? So if you can imagine just getting here, having to take time off to go take care of your children, and you have two weeks vacation, it cost me six days last summer to be able to balance one hour off of the two hours. Six days. If you only get two weeks vacation, now you only get four days vacation in the year. How is anybody supposed to get respite off of four days? The other thing that I wanted to talk about is the-
Linda, can you finish that in 10 seconds?
I can. The other thing I wanted to address would be the COLA. We are supposed to be, what's being negotiated is .57. I am the low-income worker right here. That, to me, equates to $30. $30 for the year. Well, not for the year, but per month. $30, and I'm low-income. Thank you.
President Jamal and members of the board, my name is Victoria. I've been an employee for this organization, specifically IVC, for six years full-time, two and a half as a part-timer. First of all, I want to thank each and, each and every one of you for your hard work and contribution towards this public service and these amazing colleges that we have. But obviously, that this proposed contract for us as staff is, does not match the increase of cost of living that we are experiencing here in Orange County. This would be personally for me a large step back for my family of three. As of now, my rent last month went up $600 a month. And if you think about it, it's also groceries that went up for about three people, close to about $500 a month, and I'm not talking about shopping for caviar. I'm talking about regular groceries. And bills and childcare and driving to work to, I live here close by in Ladera, and I drive to IVC, so that's gas and expenses like that. This, I believe that this offer kind of devalues us, devalues us as professionals and as human beings trying to care for our families. We're not asking for raises. We're asking for, just to keep with the current inflation. We, I request, we request your humble support, and I have a tremendous respect for our faculty and our managers. But we, as staff, a lot of times are kind of forgotten because we're the root. We are the foundation of this college. We make kind of, we make it run as well. So hear us, please, and we request your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Victoria.
Esteemed members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I know that I'm preaching to the choir when I say that our college plays a vital role in empowering individuals from diverse backgrounds to pursue their dreams through education. At the same time, the reality is that many of our faculty members, myself included, struggle to build a life rooted in South Orange County on our current salaries. Of course, this impacts quality of life here in the notoriously expensive OC, but more importantly, our ability to fully focus on our teaching and support roles. Allow me to put some numbers to this claim. This is my third year working at Saddleback as a full-time faculty member, recognizing my privilege there. In 2003, I earned a little over $90,000 after taxes for the whole academic year. For context, I worked three overload classes throughout the spring and fall and taught two classes over the summer. So this brought in exactly $7,672 per month. Rent for my one-bedroom that year was $27.67 per month. Utilities were about $210. My vegetarian groceries cost $500 per month for my husband and I, my math teacher husband and I. I do have one 13-year-old car from graduate school that's totally paid off, but the other car payments are about $620 per month. Gas is about $100 per month, thank you Costco, and our car insurance costs $200 per month. So these basic needs alone, not including clothing, entertainment like bowling with friends or buying lunch at the food truck on campus, were consuming about 55% of my monthly salary. As rents continue to rise, inflation's driving up prices, and now with a baby on the way, it's hard for me to envision a future in which I can afford to stop renting and purchase a home here for some longer-term stability. Apparently, it takes an annual income of $350,000 or more to purchase a median home in Orange County, let alone South Orange County, and even if there were two of me, I'm not sure how I would get there. So in conclusion, I urge the board to consider approving a more livable pay increase for our faculty. Investing in our faculty is an investment in our students and the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to come and speak? No? All right. Tim, thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. It touched all of us.
Indeed. Thank you for your comments. Let's now turn on, turn to board reports and looking at the screen. I'm going to start on my left, and that's Trustee Melchiker.
Okay. Irvine Valley College was recently ranked number one in California and number six in the nation. Fabulous. Saddleback, Saddleback College was ranked number five in California and number 14 in the nation. These are extraordinary. Friends emailed and texted me, "Congratulations with media broadcasts of this great news attached." It was in all the media, all the local media. So our colleges were shining in all the media. This incredible achievement is because, as you can hear, of the passion, heart, and soul of all of you. You are amazing, and because our students are the best served in California and USA, we thank you. Flex Week was incredible. President Stern and Hernandez's presentations on their schools' accomplishments and their dreams for the future were the best I had ever seen. I attended many Flex Week sessions again. The best meetings I attend were the Faculty Association meeting, Anne Marie's budget session, the tech presentation by Amanda Turner and Sammy Lee, the banner update by IT staff, One Book One College of Saddleback, and The Apprenticeship 101 by Lisa Inlow of Culinary Arts. Amanda and Sammy sent recordings to the attendees, and Ruby Hazard sent out the information about open enrollment and benefits in her recordings and this week's health fair that will be held at both colleges this week. These fine employees and, of course, the presentation from the honors program today, and our brilliant Mars Rover students remind me of what I'm doing here. That our staff is exceptional was evident by Flex Week presentations and by the extraordinary highest rankings of our two wonderful colleges. Thank you.
Well-
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you for that report, Trustee Melchiker. Trustee Rydel.
Well, I think I could just dovetail what Trustee Melchiker had to say. I do want to add that it is very enjoyable, and I find it very interesting and clever that when I attend presentations that use the AV to use our video to make it more real. And I just wanted to appreciate all the presenters who had done so. It was, it was, it's lovely and it's fun. Makes you want to come back. I also, we also all attended the Code of Ethics class that we had this summer, and I've started to attend different meetings in my community that would be Area Four, and I want to be involved more with the community that elected me. So I went to a fire safety meeting. I thought everybody could use some information on that, especially with the fires up north. And what is dear to my heart, I attended a domestic violence meeting, and I'm not going to go into it, but if you ever have the opportunity to hear some information, what happens there, you think you know, but you really don't. So with that, I'll send it over to you.
Summer's an interesting time, different kinds of things going on. There were some committee meetings, including policy. I too was at the ethics, and no matter how many times I hear that, there's always something new or something that I heard that knew to me, even though I perhaps heard it before, perhaps I didn't actually hear it. Opening day was fun, but I want to talk about something else, actually. Recently, a St. Jude's commercial, A Boy Named Brayden, said, "I will shorten down the story." And I thought, I need to do that often. So I'm going to try to shorten down the story about what it's like to be in some organizations outside of the college. First, the Orange County Business Council held its first legislative day, and it was an excellent event. I've been in educational advocacy for decades, and this was one of the most efficient and helpful days that I have ever participated in. Secondly, I've told you about this before, but the Association of Community College Trustees Public Policy and Advocacy Committee is winding up its work on legislative priorities for 2025, which is now being finalized. And that has been fun. Sometimes, different parts of the country kind of dominate some of these things, so it's nice to have California. There's plenty of California, but we're also the biggest, so it's good to have more representation, I think. And thirdly, the Orange County School Board Association. I want to congratulate Trustee Pintergas for becoming treasurer of that organization, opening up the job of community college representative, which I happily accepted. With my background in teaching every grade from kindergarten through community college, I'm excited to be able to offer a unique and complete perspective. I understand the challenges of school boards at all levels, and I'm happy to keep community colleges in the conversation. And I want to finish with, as the former Director of Honors at Mount San Antonio College, we had one of the largest programs as well in honors. But what is going on at IVC right now is just unbelievable. That is a huge, and I understand how much work that is for the director with, from scheduling, just tremendous. So congratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, my first report will be this Wednesday, and we'll see how I do with the money of the OCSBA. So I attended many of the same events. I did want to highlight just a little bit differently how, how nice it was, you know, to be, we did have the ethics training, and that is certainly very important. But to go to the, the president's opening sessions, I'll be upfront and honest, it was a great way for me to get out of my own professional development day at my school. But it was very well worth it. You guys did an amazing job, and, and it was really nice to hear the, the good news that's going on at both of the colleges, to then wake up the next day to the good news about how well we were doing statewide and nationally. So kudos to you guys. It was, and everyone that has everything to do with that, classified faculty administration, it's all a group effort. So yeah, so that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll be keeping my board report short today. I was happy to go to the Orange County State of the County event on August 9th, and Orange County is doing well, as you might imagine. So that's always good news. Here are broader economy and just state of the county doing well. I also did want to shout out the opening sessions at both IVC and Saddleback. We've got a lot of great things to be proud of at both of our colleges, and thank you to everyone who made it possible to just be where we're at right now. We're well-positioned. We're getting recognition from various groups on various levels. So I'm proud of our administrative staff and faculty and everyone who's been involved in making our colleges as strong and as great as they are today. And that's it for my report.
Thank you for that, and I will repeat a little but be brief. I think we, as trustees, I know as a trustee, we see every day what happens at the two colleges and our district services, but to have a third-party authenticate that feels even better to, you know, we're often saying we are the top-ranked, we have the top-ranked statewide rankings and national rankings of both colleges, and having a third-party affirm that was just awesome. And I think to Trustee Pintergas' point, I mean, it's a combination and a group effort and the faculty, staff, and administration. So awesome accomplishment, and very, very, very proud of what we do here at the district and the two colleges. The opening sessions, the president's opening sessions were great. Thank you for allowing me to say a few words. I think it's going to be another phenomenal academic year. The OCBC thing, event with legislators and other electeds was awesome. And TJ, again, congratulations to you and Carolyn on being movers and shakers at OCSBA. So that's my report, and we'll move on to the ASG reports, and we'll start out with Saddleback College.
No, our student trustee.
Our student trustee.
Oh, I'm sorry. Student trustee Clemente. I didn't know. My apologies.
I'm here.
I can, in my screen, I, yeah, now I can see.
Okay, sorry. Hi.
No, it's not my problem.
It's okay. I just wanted to give thanks to all the staff, admin, classified employees, police, and educators. A special thanks to Chancellor Barnes, Grace, Kristen, Rosa Prado. Thank you all for helping guide me and supporting me in this position. I wouldn't be here without you all, and I'm sure you guys wouldn't be here without us. So special thanks to you guys. Currently, I'm finding space on both campuses to designate office hours to be open to both students of IVC and Saddleback students. So be on the lookout for these flyers. Trying to provide more student support, so either via Zoom or in person. I will also be attending a Next Up Blueprint for Success conference with my friend and former Project Mars Rover scholar, Lucius Gibbons, and I look forward to bringing more resource information and contacts to help both of our college communities. I look forward to working with faculty, staff, admin, and students in making this year inspirational and impactful. Thanks.
Thank you, student trustee Clemente. Now we're on to ASG, Saddleback College.
Hello, hello. All right. Hi, everybody. For my office report, I will be talking about our student voter engagement plan. I've been working on a voter engagement plan with my advisor, Chris Hargraves, about getting students more involved in, with knowledge about the upcoming November election. And I've, I'm going to, I have invited three speakers to come to our campus who are in competitive house races within the area of Saddleback College. So from, from California District 49, I've invited Representative Mike Levin to make a Q and A with our students and to answer policy questions. The same with Matt Gunderson, who's also running for District 49. And for District 40, I've invited Mr. Joe Kerr, who is running for, again, District 40 representative. So that's all I'm going to say about our student voter engagement plan. ASG is, for my Saddleback, ASG is most, majority-filled. We're just rounding out a couple more positions in ASG. Our welcome week was a success with, with a lot of participation last week. With, we actually had a showing of Inside Out 2 just a couple of days ago, which had 70 students, which is a lot considering. We, our, our ASG is updating our students regularly about our campus reconstruction project so that we can encourage students to come early and to find parking, because parking is insane right now. I would like to move off of trustee- I would like to move off of trustee Milchiker's report by saying that I was really happy to see Saddleback College is ranked number 14 in the nation. It really gives me with a lot of pride that I'm able to represent just an amazing college nationally. And just to round out the last 10 seconds of my report, I'd like to encourage you all to listen to the testimonies of the public commentators. They are very, very powerful. And with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that. IVC, ASG.
Good evening, all. It's been a busy past couple of weeks for ASIVC, and we've been working tirelessly to host events for students and publicize our two upcoming opportunities to join ASIVC. So we held, not we, the campus held Laser Day on August 14th, and we had close to 1,000 students in attendance, as I'm sure you've heard before. And ASIVC held a booth at Laser Day where we were recruiting students for our justice and senator positions. And shortly after, we held a day-long retreat, which included trainings on parliamentary procedure, Brown Act, leadership skills, and how to effectively advocate for students in shared governance committees. And last week, we held our welcome week, which was also extremely successful. In our last event, being our movie night at the Live Oak Terrace, we had 140 students in attendance, which is a significant increase from last year's attendance of 40 students. So we also held two informational sessions for our five open justice positions. And students in attendance were engaged and eager to join ASIVC, get involved, and ultimately contribute to something that is larger than themselves. So it's an exciting time to be on campus, and student engagement has been through the roof. And before coming here, I hosted a workshop as a Mesa tutor for organic chemistry students, where I had over 20 students in attendance, which is huge. I remember I used to be so excited when even five students would come and participate when we had just started the program. So I am left smiling that it's been so lively at IVC, and I can't wait to carry this energy throughout the academic year and continue to get students involved and support them academically. Thank you all, and this concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Now on to IVC Academic Senate.
Good evening, trustees. As we begin this new semester, I wanted to express the excitement and energy that has filled our campuses. And we had a fantastic start to our Professional Development Week. And it was wonderful to see some of you at some of the workshops. It truly means a lot to our faculty to see you and be engaged and supporting us on our campuses. So thank you for that. Also, thank you to those of you who attended the opening session and the luncheon, because again, we sat down, we broke bread, we hung out, we talked about our summers, our kids, our dogs and cats. And that's again, another way in which we can relate as human beings, not so much in the hierarchical places that we exist. I also want to take a moment to thank you also for your continued support of our faculty, especially now during our contract negotiations. And I wanted to bring to your attention something that is primary in my mind, that the contract negotiations truly revolve around salaries and benefits and working conditions. But we cannot forget the outcomes of these discussions directly impact faculty and their ability to teach and engage their students, which then contribute to the overall quality of education, hence their success. So in sum, the connection between the contract negotiations and student success is both direct and indirect. And by addressing the needs of our faculty, our district, us, we can continue to create conditions that allow teachers to perform their best, ultimately ensuring that students receive the highest standards of education, as is evident in our number one and number one, and number five, excuse me, rankings according to Wallet Hub. So again, connecting student success to those contract negotiations that we're having at the moment. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for that. Faculty Association. Saddleback College Academic Senate. My apologies, Dan.
No worries. I'll get back at you.
I'm sure, I'm sure you will.
Special thank you to Cindy Viscachill and her team for helping me out on a very private and confidential matter this week. It was of great help. I am a little disappointed Marcia didn't mention my awesome video at the president's welcome this week. I'm not surprised by the ranking at or near the top for the Wallet, the Wallet Hub, I almost said Wallet Club, Wallet Hub ranking. Because of course, with faculty and staff like this, we deserve and earned that position. I just want to point out that two of those four items that they measured on, education and career outcomes, is faculty-driven. It's one of our 10 plus one items. Number five, standards regarding student preparation in success. So that was something I'm very proud of our faculty with. Unfortunately, we also have other issues, and one of which is, my email lit up on the way to the meeting tonight. Something went wrong with Canvas and my students and the assignment they're doing, so I can't stay very long, because I've got to go figure out what the hell happened with Canvas. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Dan, and go easy on me. Faculty Association, now you're up.
Now it's my turn. All right. Well, number one, I want to thank all the board members and administrators within the district that did come to the Faculty Association luncheon. We were really happy to have that back in person and be able to not only be amongst the faculty, be able to have some conversation, hear some updates, but also see some of the leadership of the district attend that too. And I know that we will be looking to do that every fall. And I just want to give an open invitation now and in the future to have you all attend, because I think it is important to see you there. I think it's important for us to continue to keep our lines of communication open for not only the district, but most importantly, our students. I also want to thank the faculty who spoke today and shared their stories. I think we have heard, you know, a lot of different faculty speak over the course of now probably the last like eight months. And I know at times you might feel like you're hearing the same thing, but it is important to hear what is going on to the individuals that are impacted by kind of our decisions and what we're doing as it relates to at the district, in the classroom, within the colleges, and most importantly, with our students directly and with our negotiations. As we kind of approach the second week of the semester, the start of the second week semester, I just want to acknowledge all the work that the faculty have done over the last some, well, this whole summer up through this first week of school to get their class, their curriculum, their lectures-ready assignments, you know, even making sure Canvas is working appropriately, which we can never, you know, 100% be ready for, but we all kind of have to deal with and fix and do, and do what we can with. I also want to kind of ask us to reflect as we come to Labor Day weekend, that we look and think about the importance of labor in this country and in this district. In addition to celebration at honors, we need to show the respect and dignity of those efforts in the way we compensate and support the labors. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Robert. IVC Classified Senate.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Barnes, and members of the community. Tonight, I'd like to take a moment to highlight the incredible work being done by our classified professionals at Urban Valley College and throughout our district. These dedicated individuals who work across our campuses and district truly embody the spirit of service and commitment to our students' success. Our classified professionals are not only excelling in their daily roles, but many have stepped up to serve our community in leadership positions, both locally and statewide. It's this dedication that has allowed them to make such a significant impact to our students and our community. Many have also taken it upon themselves to pursue professional development activities, including advanced degrees, investing their own time and energy to enhance their skills. We bring these new skills back to campus, putting them to use in ways that directly benefits us all. One of the standout achievements is our role in the Caring Campus Initiative. IVC classified professionals through our Classified Senate were not just early adopters, they were trailblazers. We helped shape the very foundation of this initiative that's now recognized statewide. I'm especially proud of leaders like Desiree Ortiz and Karen Jimenez. Desiree, who has mentored others throughout California, and Karen, who has served as president of the California Community Colleges Classified Senate, all while continuing to push the Caring Campus Initiative forward. What's really inspiring is that much of this work was initiated by classified professionals themselves. They saw the need and took action, not because they were asked, but because they cared deeply about our campus and our students. Every day, we see our classified professionals' efforts come to life across the colleges and the district, whether it's stepping in to solve problems on the fly or being flexible to meet the needs of our campus. Our classified professionals are always there, making a difference, making an impact. And it's all driven by one common goal, helping our students succeed. We're incredibly proud and grateful for everything they do. And that's why tonight, on behalf of our Classified Senate, we stand united with our union, asking not only for the recognition of the remarkable work our classified professionals have done and continue to do, but also to ensure that we are treated and compensated fairly. My colleagues' dedication and diligence deserves nothing less. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that statement. Now on to Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Hello, members of the board, Chancellor Barnes. As Ace has pointedly shared, how the work of the classified professionals in our district is essential to the vitality of our educational community, I also want to share how our dedication and expertise support the day-to-day operations that enable students to succeed and faculty to teach effectively. From administrative tasks to technical support and direct student services, classified professionals ensure that things keep running. We keep things running in the face of constant change, like opening new buildings, implementing a new and better yet very late FAFSA. Legislative curveballs in a pandemic that literally shut down our physical campuses. Classified were there to help support everyone. Everything from our behind-the-scenes contributions through our, down, all the things that we do behind the scenes, right on down to our front-counter interactions, are critical to fostering a welcoming and productive atmosphere. Students wouldn't make it into the classroom if our professionals in A and R didn't make sure they got there financially, made sure that they were able to afford it, and someone was able to walk them over there. Karen Campus right here, you guys stole her from us. So making classified professionals, we make ourselves invaluable pillars of our college communities. There are so many reasons why that we as a union are dedicated to our work. Some reasons include that we love to see the growth and development of our students. We enjoy supporting the faculty to live their best educator selves or professionals that take pride in our work. But what you heard tonight, and I think one of the most pointed reasons, is that we are part of this community. Figured it, we reside in the cities and neighborhoods that our colleges serve. And so we often see ourselves in our students. The struggles and worries that our students face are the very same ones that our own families deal with. I work with the Promise Program, and I've had the honor to unknowingly support the children of my coworkers. Several of my colleagues didn't tell me until after their children had moved on to their transfer schools that I was their kid's promise coach. They let me know that the financial burden that Promise took away from their household allowed them to send their kids to their kid's dream school. So I noticed I have no more time. I just want to reiterate that I am proud to be a classified professional, and I encourage you to not only help recognize our work, but value us as individuals and see us in these contract negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now on to CSEA.
Thank you, Mr. President, Dr. Barnes, member of the board. First of all, we want to thank you very much for listening to our classified professionals. Everything that they say, they say with sincerity, and they speak from the heart. And a lot of that has to do with the Caring Campus program and the fact that how much we do honestly care about the future of this country. And it starts with the generations coming up through our collusion systems. We really appreciate the fact that we're able to help them, and they really appreciate the fact that they don't have to feel lost. They don't have to feel that they don't have a direction. But more importantly, we value the work that we do. We take pride in the work that we do. And the fact that moving forward, we still are going to do that for generations to come. Not only do we want to make sure that there is student success with what we do as we stand with our Faculty Association, but we also want to make sure that students reach the success that they're striving for, for we take pride in that in our colleges. So much so, that not only do we want to make sure that hopes don't die, we want to make sure that hearts don't die either. We really do value what we do, and we're hoping that, working together across this district, that as a district and the colleges, we collectively can set the tone for the future of generations to come here in America.
Thank you for that statement, Scott. I cannot see if there's anyone there from the POA, trustee Rydel?
No, there's not.
Okay. And I don't believe we have any board requests for reports. So we're now on to 5.1, and bear with me. Let me see if I can get this done. We are now at Board Agenda Item 5.1, Conduct a Public Hearing on Proposed Budget of the District for 2024-2025. Before we have that public hearing, Vice Chancellor Anne Marie Gabel will provide an introduction.
Before we have the public hearing, the agenda item pertains to a public hearing for the adopted budget for 2425 as required by the California Code of Regulations Title V, Section 58301. The public hearing was noticed in the Orange County Register and posted on the district's website. The budget document has been available for public inspection in the district office lobby since Monday, August 19, 2024. This hearing provides the public an opportunity to comment on the budget before it is adopted.
Board Item 5.1, Public Hearing on the Matter at Hand is now open. Comments are not to exceed two minutes. Does the staff at, Vice Chancellor Gabel's staff have any response? I don't think we have any public comments.
No.
Correct?
Correct.
Trustee Rydel?
Yes.
The public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion on this matter by the board? Trustee Rydel, if you can help me?
No, I see none.
Okay, thank you for that. Item 5.1 is concluded. We can now move to Item 5.2, Approval of the Adopted Budget for Fiscal Year 24-2025. And I think I need a motion and a second.
I so moved.
Motion from trustee Rydel?
Second from.
Trustee Milchiker?
Yeah, trustee Milchiker.
Second from trustee Milchiker? Okay. And then I'm going to ask trustee Gabel to begin the presentation.
Yes, thank you for the promotion to trustee, but yes.
I'm sorry. I meant Vice Chancellor Gabel.
That's okay. Thank you, board. So tonight, we have our executive director of fiscal services here with us, Ms. Connie Kavanaugh, who will be doing the budget presentation. And then we'll both be available afterwards for questions. So I'll turn it over to Connie right now.
Good evening, for those that are here and those that are remote. I'm happy to be here tonight to present our 2024-25 adopted budget. See if I get it right here. So just to, just quickly, I always like to focus on our philosophy as we adopt the budget. We want to ensure that we're wise and prudent in the use of public resources, that we promote financial strength and stability, and that we're maximizing educational opportunities for our students. This, we're just sharing again, our budget development guidelines that were adopted by the board back in January. We saw these at tentative budget as well. Not going to read through them, but these are clearly our focus as we work through and develop our budget. Going the wrong way. So part of the budget development process is to first close our books. So it's our year-end close as of June 30th. So this is just a summary by fund of our actuals for the 23-24 fiscal year. And again, in bold at the top is our unrestricted general fund, which is our operating funds for the district. So I'm not going to read all the numbers to you, but just, just to highlight, our beginning balance was just over $107 million, but we did have an ending fund balance of $124.9 million. That's after we collected all of our revenues and distributed those expenditures. Some of the other major funds are our capital outlay fund, which we are spending down our resources. Our ending fund balance of just under $400,000 is below where we started the year at the 400, sorry, I said thousand, million, 405 million. And that's really in an effort for us to work on our capital projects and ensure we're funding those in more of a cash flow needed basis instead of establishing those funds in advance of our construction. Another thing I just want to highlight is that our retiree benefits and OPHEB trust funds grew quite a bit this year. The market was much more favorable to us this year. So we did end the year at just over $30 million more than we started the year. Some of that is as a result of the additional contribution we made because we were below our required liability level last year. So we did make quite a substantial contribution. But much, most of this, much of this is as a result of favorable market trends and earnings on the trust. Just to highlight some of the assumptions that we use. So beginning with revenue, we obviously base, as always, on the actual adopted state budget. Tentative, when we looked at our budget in tentative, we were still working off of the governor's proposed budget from May, but we had a final budget. governor's proposed budget from May, but we had a final budget that was adopted in June by the state. So part of that budget adoption included the COLA of 1.07% that we applied to our student-centered funding formula, and we are assuming the 0.1% growth that is allowed through the student-centered funding formula. Just as a highlight, in 23-24, we actually were able to receive just under, approximately 0.9% growth funding, as there was additional monies available statewide to go out to the colleges. But conservatively, we're budgeting at the 0.1% because that's what we're entitled to. We have budgeted for property taxes, increase of 4%. We did achieve a little bit higher than that last year, primarily as a result of supplemental taxes, but just to be conservative and follow our trends over the course of the history, we've increased those by 4%. Our basic aid allocation remains the same as it was at tentative budget, that we are at $111.5 million, and we will have some carryover into 25-26. As a result of closing the books in 23-24, we had some excess funds collected that will be distributed in future years. And we have budgeted our unrestricted lottery at $191 per FTES, so approximately $5.3 million we expect to collect for unrestricted lottery. We based our state categorical funding on the advanced apportionment that we received in July from the state chancellor's office, which included any of the programs that were subject to COLA, so we have recognized the COLA adjustments in those programs. We budgeted our Education Protection Act EPA revenue at $2.69 million. Again, we get $100 per FTES in that funding, and those monies are spent and budgeted for part-time faculty salaries and benefits. We've had positive interest earnings. I say positive, meaning they've been highly, irregularly high in the last couple of years, so we have adjusted our budget to anticipate those extra interest earnings that we've seen over the last couple of years, so those are estimated at $12 million. And our ground lease revenue is estimated at 4.66, which is higher than the past because , hooray, we're collecting, finally collecting some ground rents from some of our ATEP So our DRAC model, this is again just very summary overview, our SCFF funding that is allocated to the colleges is, sorry, I can't see that screen so far away, I'm going to flip my, $218.5 million. We are budgeting non-resident tuition at just under $12 million. Our district-wide local revenue is $17 million. District-wide state revenues are budgeted at $17.6 million, and our site local revenue, which includes our contribution to the pension stabilization, is $18.2 million. And then we do the allocation for district services and our general expenses, so the total allocations to both the colleges and the district services is just over $283 million. That is an increase from the prior-year adopted budget of 7.6%, so everyone's receiving approximately 7.6% more than they received in the prior year. The next area here, which is the total, the kind of lumped altogether is contingency, does include prior-year adjustments, so part of the process is when we close the books, we true-up the model. In other words, we go back and recalculate the model, including SCFF, for the actual FTES that the colleges have reported, and all of the revenues collected and any of the general expenses that apply to the model, we actually true all that up so that it can get distributed in the next year. So part of the $44 million on that line, about half of it, represents additional funds for the 23-24 year that are being distributed to the colleges in 24-25. So that becomes one-time funds for the colleges, because those will not be ongoing, it's just a true-up of the 23-24 fiscal year. And then, of course, we always include our location ending balances, because this really represents what our unrestricted budget is, which includes our beginning balances. So the total unrestricted available funds is just under $383 million allocated to all of the locations. So moving on to our expenditure assumptions that we used during budget development, we included all positions in our budget, including all of our full-time faculty advancements anticipated on the salary schedules for step and column adjustments, and we have included projected increases for the pending salary negotiations. The PERS and STIRS rates for 24-25 are 27.05 and 19.1, respectively. STIRS has been held constant for several years now, PERS continues to go up each year, but this was a, I would say, a smaller increase than we had anticipated. PERS has had some favorable returns in the last couple of years. Our health and wealth benefit, health and welfare benefit costs have increased 5% from 23-24. Our unemployment insurance rate stays the same at 0.05%. Our workers' comp rate is 1.14, which is down 0.1% from last year, which is, really shows the work that's being done to make sure that our staff is safe and that we have fewer claims, which results in lower premiums. Our property and liability insurance is budgeted at $2.1 million, which is a $500,000 increase from 23-24. It's primarily as a result to legislation that was passed AB 218 in 2020, it was effective in 2020, which raised this, increased the statute of limitations for child abuse and molestation claims. So as a result, carriers are building additional reserves to ensure that they have adequate funds to cover any potential claims. So it's actually a prior pool that we were members of, have reached out to all districts, both active and prior, to build those reserves in anticipation of future claims. Speaking of reserves, our adopted budget reserves, our reserve for economic uncertainties, is $30.6 million, which is made up of $19.8 million, which is our 7.5% of our unrestricted revenues, so that's calculated off of the DRAC model. And then, at the site level, we set aside, so this is representative of the colleges as well as district services, we set aside 3.75% of our projected unrestricted expenditures, which equals just under $11 million. Our board policy requires the sites to budget a minimum of 3.5%, but our goal is, per the policy, that we want to have an equivalent of 20%, I'm sorry, two months' worth of unrestricted expenditures, which represents just under 17%. So this year, in order to meet that reserve requirement, the sites had to budget, actually set aside 3.75%, which was similar to where we were last year. We additionally build a reserve for basic aid, which is just under, or sorry, just over $20 million, 20% of the unrealized tax collections, which is $17.5 million. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, we have the carryover from the prior year based on our actual collections for 23-24 of just under $2.7 million. So the sum total of all of those represent our unrestricted ending fund balance. So just try to put this in a picture form for you, just highlighting how the funds are allocated to all of the areas of the district. I won't read through all of them. Our total allocated funds, which include our beginning balances and anticipated collections of revenue, is just, is 449 million, and then this shows pictorially how it's distributed between the colleges, district services, meeting our contingency requirements, as well as the set asides that we do out of our basic aid funds for some of our long-term debt and fixed expenditures. So very summary overview of our adopted budget, again, highlighting the top bold line there represents our unrestricted general fund, which is our operating budget. We are anticipating revenues in the unrestricted general fund of just under $385 million, and budgeted expenditures of $415 million. So we are budgeting a deficit of $30 million, which still leaves us with adequate funding reserves of $94.8 million. Again, same with cap outlay, we are projecting that we will spend more than we are bringing in, based on the funds we have previously set aside for some of those capital projects, and again, anticipate that we'll have favorable market returns in our trust funds, so those funds are anticipated to have a surplus this year. So the total, total budget shows that we begin with $716 million, and we will end with $423 million in fund balance. So looking ahead, as always, we're monitoring the state economy and how that can impact our district, as well as our local property tax trends, since that has such a direct impact on our district specifically, and make sure that we're addressing any of those impacts for future planning. We are constantly monitoring our enrollment and FTES trends, as we know that impacts our allocations to our colleges, and making sure that we do some projections on our SCFF calculations to ensure the colleges are adequately set up to prepare for the future and what funds they can anticipate in future years. And we are continuing our ATEP efforts, making sure that we're finding additional prospective tenants to continue to build out that space. See, I can't go the right way, no matter what I try. Any questions?
Well, thank you for that presentation. Yes, closing out on the ATEP note, we're always interested in securing new tenants. Trustee Rydel, do you want to coordinate board questions?
Yes, I was going to ask. Yes.
I just have a quick, thank you, I just have a quick question. First of all, I think it's a number of years ago, we decided to have our budget be completely open and examinable by all of our constituents, you know, external and internal constituents, where everybody could look at our budget and know exactly what we have, and there's no lying, no money hidden, so that's wonderful. I was just wondering, the money that we're getting now from the ATEP, for the ATEP tenants, where does that go to?
It's part of the DRAC model, so those are allocated back out to the sites. So it's just part of our, it's the, one of the line items is the local revenue, so it's included in there and distributed back to the locations.
So it goes to both colleges, then?
Correct. It's distributed in the proportional percentage based on the model.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are there any more questions, trustees?
Just, sorry, just to finish that up, we are, that is distributed on our CTE, so we decided, as the DRAC committee, to distribute those funds based on CTE, since the nature of ATEP itself is based on career development.
Yeah, it is.
So there are different percentages used throughout the model, but specifically for the ground lease revenues, that's how it's distributed within DRAC.
That makes sense, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else? All right. Can we have a?
We're good. I think, yeah, we've already, excellent presentation, very concise, taking a long document and presenting it concisely, thank you very much. But yeah, we have, we do have a motion and a second, so we just need to roll call vote.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchik?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente.
If I can steal one more second, I usually start with this, and now I'm going to end with it by accident, but I just want to give a huge shout-out to my whole department and division, this is that, as you pointed out, a large document and takes a lot of hard work and effort, so I just wanted to really acknowledge all those that aren't here with me, they're here with me in spirit, but just thank them for their work, so, thank you.
Thank you, Connie, we realize that.
Thank you, Connie, and on that note, the budget for fiscal year 24-25 is adopted on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now moving on. My screen still shows the vote, but I believe we're into the resolutions. Women's Equality Day, is that going to be you, trustee Inman?
Yes, sir. There's one resolution on the agenda for this month for approval. Item 6.1, Women's Equality Day. Therefore be it resolved that South Orange County Community College District will commemorate Women's Equality Day, August 26, as a national day celebrating the importance of the women's suffrage movement and the work to secure and expand equal rights today. Can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, roll call vote.
Who made the second?
I think two people, the same, okay, Ryan can take it.
Ryan? Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Student, excuse me, trustee J is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchik?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente.
The resolution carries on unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now moving on to 7.0, there's a lag a little bit on my end. Trustees' requests for attending conferences. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I think that was by audible. Trustee Dak, motion, and then trustee Milchik, a second. Any questions?
Just a point of order, I think we skipped, oh, nevermind.
Did we skip an item?
No. Had a glitch.
No worries, and there's a lag on my end, so it takes about a second or two. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchik?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente.
Aye.
The item carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to 7.2, a ballot measure, Proposition 2, Public Education Facilities Bond Measure of 2024, will be on the November ballot. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion, trustee Dak?
Second from trustee.
Oh, from Inman or from you?
From me, sorry. I was laughing.
That's okay, I gave Ann Marie a promotion earlier. Trustee Rydel, seconded. Juliana, I don't know if you or anyone there from Government Affairs wants to comment on this, or Latisha, on the ballot measure?
So bottom line, as you mentioned, this is a ballot measure to place Prop 2 on the November ballot, and so basically, it's, it provides funding for basically our state matching money, so when the colleges submit their IPPs and their FPPs for state matching funds for their facilities, we tap into this fund. So it's $1.5 billion for community colleges, and then $8.5 billion dedicated to elementary through secondary. So it's, it sounds like a lot, $1.5 billion, we're hoping for more, but we'll take the $1.5 billion, and you'll see there in the docket that we have some IPPs and FPPs that we are submitting for Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, and hopefully this passes, so we can get those matching funds.
All right, thank you for that. We have a motion and a second. I don't think there's any more questions, so let's go ahead and vote.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchik?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente.
Aye.
Motion carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right. Now, I believe, on to the, should be the consent calendar. All right, we are, we're on approval consent calendar. Do we have any polls from trustees? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to pass the consent calendar.
Motion, trustee Prendergast?
Second.
Second from trustee Rydel. Let's go ahead and vote on consent calendar items.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee J is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchik?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente.
Aye.
The consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now moving on to 10.1, adoption, adopt resolution 2410, change order with respect to global diversified voltage services at IVC. Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion, trustee Milchiker?
Second.
Second from, I think that was trustee Dak. Do we have any questions on the item? All right, Grace, please call the roll.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente?
Aye.
Motion carries, the item carries, on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now moving on to 10.2, which is the application for fiscal accountability for payroll checks. I don't know, Vice Chancellor Gable, you want to say anything about this? Or?
Yes, I can. I can.
Because it is a little bit of a change, yeah.
Yes, this is a change. We are currently fiscally accountable for all of the checks that we issue to our vendors and reimbursements to our employees. As we're going through the implementation of Banner, it's become apparent that we need to become fiscally accountable for our payroll checks too. So what does that mean? That means that we will be issuing the payroll checks ourselves and not relying on the Orange County Department of Education. So we'll be able to set the payroll dates in accordance with, you know, ed code, so that we're still complying with that. But we'll be taking over a lot of the responsibility ourselves so that we can better utilize the full functions of the Banner system and how it is designed and works for payroll purposes. So what this resolution is doing, it's, the board is giving us the authorization to actually submit the application to the Orange County Department of Education. That is due to them by September 1st. They will review our application. We will be required to have an external auditor come and look at our internal controls, and then they will provide that report to the Orange County Department of Education. The Orange County Department of Education will work with the county of Orange, and they will then notify us before March 1st of 2025, whether or not they approve our application. If they do approve it, it becomes effective July 1st, 2025, which is the date that corresponds with when we would be going live with Banner for the fiscal and the payroll pieces.
Great.
Yeah, I have a question too.
Thank you for that explanation. Do you have a motion?
No, we have questions. Well, I guess I'll make a motion to pass.
Yeah. Motion, trustee Prendergast. Second from trustee Milchiker, trustee Prendergast.
Questions?
Yeah, I, you know, when I read this, I was slightly confused. I know we have to do it by September 1st, so we have to, we have to approve it now. And it's really important, but I was wondering, do other districts that use Banner have the same problem? And they have to do the same thing? They have to do the same machinations kind of to be able to get it to work?
Yes, and especially the districts that are on SaaS. So Mount SAC has done this exact same thing, where they become fiscally accountable for their payroll checks. The other two districts in Orange County, North Orange County and Coast, they're both on the Banner system, but they're on the original platform, and so they're not on the SaaS environment. Being on the SaaS environment limits our ability to make customizations ourselves, and both North Orange and Coast were required to customize the system in order to get it to work. We don't have that option, since we're using the SaaS platform.
Okay, thank you. Question? Question?
Yes.
My question is, I remember when I was at Mount SAC and we talked about these kinds of things, there was, there were discussions sometimes about who got the interest when payroll was about to be given, whether it was checks, for instance, were distributed on Friday or Monday, and many, many other things. That's just the one I'm thinking of now. Does this, by going to the district instead of the county, does this cost us money or make us money?
Good question.
I don't know that it does either one of them. You know, we're, right now, we're, the payroll staff is kind of doing double entry. So we're entering things into the Workday system, but then they're also having to then enter a lot of things into the county system as well to get things to work with Banner. We'll only have to enter into the one system. You know, as far as making us money, I don't know how it would really make us money, because our cash is still being held at the county, like it is now. So there's no change to where our cash is going to be held and where the checks are coming from. It's just, we're not going to be using the Orange County Department of Ed, which is kind of a mediary for us. We run everything through them, and then they feed everything to the county treasury. So now we will be more likely than not giving the information directly to the treasury and not having to give it to the county, who then gives it to the treasurer.
Thank you. So you skip a step?
Yes.
Right, and I just wanted to.
So I'd admit a moment.
There you go.
Sounds like there's efficiencies involved.
Yeah, and I just wanted to reiterate, so all the funds are still held at the county treasury, so the interest earnings and all that would not be impacted in any way, so, if that helps that question.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast?
So just, I don't know, logistical thing. So currently, for checking deductions and everything on your check and for taxes and everything, you go through the OCDEIS. Would that then change? Would we go through Banner to find that information as employees?
Yes, that would change.
Okay. And then, since that's mid-year, you'd obviously, you'd have a tax report from OCDEIS and one from Banner.
We're still working through that, I think, because we are the entity that your W2 is coming from. So I think what we would be doing is kind of combining the two systems, so that it would be on one W2, you wouldn't be receiving two W2s. But that's still being worked out, there's, you know, we're having lots of discussions with the county Department of Education on this, as well as the treasury, to figure out what's going to be the best way for us to implement.
Is there any benefit? I know, I know that it would, you know, timeline wise, it comes to July. Is there any benefit to holding off until December of the year and then starting fresh at the calendar?
I think the, originally, Chris is going to laugh at here. Originally, they wanted payroll to go live January 1st of 2025, rather than July 1st of 2025.
No problem.
And that wasn't going to be possible. I think it's better that we start off a fiscal year clean.
Okay.
So that way, our financial statements and everything that we have has that full year in it, and we're not going back and forth, so that was kind of why we went with the July date versus a January date.
I like that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Trustee Rydel?
I see none.
Okay, well, I think we have a motion and we have a second, so Grace, please call the roll.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente?
Aye.
The motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. And by the way, Grace, thank you for calling the roll for tonight's evening, for tonight, this evening, for, because I am remote. I appreciate it. We're now on to 11, Human Resources, and 11.1. And I thank Vice Chancellor Biskichil, Academic Employees and Management Personnel Actions Ratifications. That just goes so smoothly.
Rolls off your tongue, thank you.
It just rolls off the tongue.
And there are no changes to the item, except for the title.
All right, that's a bonus. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
I think that was trustee Rydel.
Yes.
And a second from trustee Dak.
I just have to mention.
And Marcia, you had a question?
Yeah, I just have to mention that Christine Doug, Kristen Douglas is on there retiring, and we did honor her last meeting, but she was our administrative assistant, and we will miss her. So hopefully she does well in her new, in her new location. Thank you.
Good recognition, and we did honor her during the board meeting last month. Well deserved. Grace, please call the roll.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente?
Abstain.
The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and an abstention from the student trustee. We're now on to 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions and Ratifications, which also rolls off the tongue quite nicely.
No changes.
Any changes?
No changes.
No changes to the item? Do we have a motion?
I just have one.
Can we? Okay, go ahead.
I just have one retirement. Okay.
Let's do a motion and a second first.
I saw move.
Motion, trustee Milchiker?
Second.
Second from trustee Dak, trustee Milchiker.
Just want to mention that Gabrielle Langenham is a Senior Administrative Assistant Counseling Services Saddleback College and has worked here for 19 years, and we wish her well and thank her for her service. Thank you.
Thank you for that recognition. Okay, let's, Grace, please call the roll.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente?
Abstain.
The motion carries unanimously on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. We're now on to Educational Technology Services. Final action in public session on Saddleback College student discipline. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from trustee Prendergast?
Second.
Second from trustee Dak. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item.
Trustee Dak?
Aye.
Trustee Inman?
Aye.
Trustee Jay is being marked absent. Trustee Jamal?
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker?
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast?
Aye.
Trustee Rydel?
Aye.
Student trustee Clemente?
Aye.
You don't have to vote them out. That's okay, it's okay. They didn't tell you that.
The, I'm sorry, did you, Marcia, were you saying something?
I don't think the student trustee votes on that one, but that, that we didn't. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
Not a personnel item, correct? Trust, I keep calling the Vice Chancellor's trustees, Vice Chancellor Biskichil? I don't think it's a personnel item.
That is correct. You are correct. It is not a personnel item.
Okay, so the, the action carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So we're now on to our information items. On 13, 13.1, Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting. 13.2, Saddleback College and IVC Speakers. And if someone has a comment, please just jump in. 13.3, Legal Fees Report. 13.4, Basic Aid Report. 13.5, Quarterly Investment. 13.6, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. 13.7, Pension Stabilization Trust Fund. We're now moving on to the written and oral reports, in this case, oral reports from the administration, and we'll start out with Chancellor Barnes.
Great, thank you so much. I just want to join everyone in welcoming you to the Fall 2024. I, for the first time, was not able to attend the opening sessions of the colleges, and that's because I was walking with trustee Jamal to the Saddleback opening session and got word that I was exposed to COVID. And I thought, I had to make a split-second decision. Should I wear a mask and expose everyone, and everybody gets a notice because of the chancellor? Or should I, so anyway, all that said, it was, it was a scare, and, but I heard it was fantastic, and I was able to observe the IVC opening session, and it was just energy through the roof, as everybody's been saying. So, welcome to the Fall 2024. And I just also want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, we have about 50,000 students and over 3,000 employees. And it's just become very evident to me, tonight included, that we have this wonderful collection of individuals who have dedicated their lives and their souls to our colleges and our district and our students. It's just very evident. I just want you to know that I acknowledge you and your hard work and your dedication. I see you, we hear you, and thank you for all that you do. So I really, really, really do appreciate it. A lot of times when we're hearing about the top-ranked colleges, we, you know, might think of an institution, but we're institutions of individuals, and so it's really about, about the people. So I just want to thank you for that. The other thing I want to say is, coming up this year, I'm very excited to be able to launch the development of our new strategic plan, 2030, along with an update to our facilities master plan. The last time that they were developed, it was right at the onset of the pandemic. So obviously, a lot has changed, and I appreciated President Stern's message today about the old, you know, the old normal and the new normal, and we're kind of in between. So here's an opportunity to kind of really think about the future of our colleges and district. And there will be a lot of opportunity for engagement. And finally, in the red, I am in the red, but I do want to welcome our new, there's, I shouldn't say new, Kristen, you are your own person, Leah, so I want to welcome Leah Falbach to the position, the interim position in the chancellor's office. So welcome, we're really happy to have you.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Leah, welcome. I've been seeing your emails and look forward to welcoming you in person. All right, moving on to college presidents, let's start out with IVC John.
Thank you, trustee Jamal. As has already been shared, we started our first week of instruction very strong. As of Friday, it looks like we have 15,516 unduplicated headcount. I had our research office verify if we had hit a high number, and they went as far back as 2,000. And we'll go back a little further, but it appears that this may be our highest enrollment ever in the history of the college, and I was so proud of our efforts last week to welcome our students, as has been shared. On Tuesday, we had a resource fair. On Wednesday, we had Laser Fest, and on Thursday, we had movie night. But what I also want to thank are all the volunteers who staffed four different welcome booths in four locations, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Wow.
We had over 58 volunteers. We served over 7,400 students, often just to provide basic questions, directions, and snacks. And I do want to thank Executive Assistant Angela Mahaney for her efforts in organizing this. And then lastly, the American Volleyball Coaches Association just recently informed us that our women's volleyball team is a recipient of the 2024 Team Academic Award. I understand IVC is only one of six community colleges in California and 41 nationwide to earn this recognition. And I think this is such a testament to our student athletes that matches not just their volleyball achievements with academic excellence, but speaks volumes to the incredible opportunities we provide to our students. So congratulations to the coaching staff and to our students in the women's volleyball team. And that, trustee Jamal concludes my report.
That's a nice way to end it. Excellent report, a lot of positive news. Thank you. Saddleback College.
I'll pick up on that positive tone. When I first started my job and had to do a lot of presentations and speeches back in 2019, I developed some talking points, and one of them that I always remember in my head was I support 25,000 students of Saddleback College. And I actually probably had to stop saying that at some point, because we were no longer 25,000. And at our nittus in the depths of the pandemic, we were down at 21,000. And we can proudly say we're back at 25,000 again for the first time, and it feels really good. So I'm really grateful to the faculty and the classified professionals and the managers who are making that happen. But I'm also really grateful to a group But I'm also really grateful to a group we don't often thank, and that is our students, particularly at Saddleback, for their patience and tolerance in dealing with our parking bumping up within 5% of overall capacity and the distance that meant that they were walking during our first week and at the same time with our quad being torn up. So I'm really grateful to our students for putting up with us and so grateful that they're back with us again. And finally, I want to thank ASG. Chris, you didn't mention for sponsoring Pizza with the President. That was really kind of you. And again, it warms the heart to hear students who surprisingly didn't have a lot of negative things to say. They were incredibly positive and tolerant and grateful to be at Saddleback. So we're even more grateful to have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Another positive report. We'd love to hear that. Now on to Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services.
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And lastly, Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
Yeah, just real quickly, I just wanted to report that Dr. Barnes, myself, and our Director of Facilities, Mary Opal, did a presentation for the City of Tustin Council last Tuesday for their local reuse authority. So the presentation was all about ATEP. And they invited all of the partners that received land at ATEP to do a presentation on what they have accomplished with their land. And I'm proud to say that we have done the most with the land of any of the other partners that have been there. And I think it was really well received by the council. Lots of questions, but I think it went over well. They did say that they want to make that an annual presentation, but that's okay. We can do that. The other thing, you know, and Connie mentioned it, thanking her team for the budget. But I just want to extend my thanks to the entire business services team